All right, we're ready to go tonight, and welcome everybody who's here tonight. Appreciate it. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Town of Waxaw, January tenth, twenty twenty-three. So at this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and the first order of business is the adoption of tonight's agenda, or are there any requested changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as published tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're all in, all five. All right, so if you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand and hold there for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll start out with a couple of things on general public comments. We have two people to sign up for the general public comments, and so I'll go, looks like same last name, so sometimes I expect a difference of opinion there. So I have Karen Webster and Matt Webster. Karen, if you'd like to come up again. Welcome.
How is everyone?
Good.
Uh, just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for having us here and letting us speak. Second, I want to also thank the officers. We don't get a chance to talk to them, but they have done a fine job of keeping us safe, and I've seen them around town. We've talked to them all the time, and I can't, I can't tell you how hard their job is. They just continuously, continuously protect us. There's several things that have come up in the past that I just couldn't believe happened. Recently, we had an escaped Georgia sex offender right in town, got busted. That's, that's what I like to hear. He's gone. Uh, last year, we had, which I didn't know, my boss arrested that was living here in Waxaw. It's kind of getting scary. The more people that come in here, the more that we're inviting crime, and I hope that the Lord will protect them and keep us safe at the same time. They do a great job. Second, I just wanted to do a rebuttal for last month. I was told that the Waxaw plans are a little different than the state plans. I actually printed off two hundred and ninety-eight pages of it. Um, so I did go through the R three for what we have here that you're planning on voting tonight for. The R three is three point five per acre of houses, which gives a distance between houses fifteen feet. It's seven point five between on each side. And the R four is four to five units per acre. So Ms. Thompson, um, I, I think I was pretty much quoted correctly last time. So there is, it's a cluster. It's a little closer. I don't know if you know or have a house that is that close. I know that Mr. Pappas does not. Uh, he's got two acres of land. That's what we have, and we're trying to keep the one acre, you know, to surrounding areas of ours. So we're trying to keep everything where it's one acre. It's a nice homely, homey type of feel. And there's the R four and R three really kind of puts a lot more on the acreage, and it kind of crowds everybody together. If you ever had a bad neighbor, you'll, you'll understand. But with that said, Rogers Pond's already gone through, and that has, um, the three to five on that land. We're also, you have for your Southern Bypass, an economic or employment center? Your employment center is saying that you'll have manufacturing. I was hoping that someone can clarify that, because you've already approved the Southern Bypass. Uh, it says manufacturing. It says that it will have light industrial, research, development, warehousing. Can you clarify that, um, with the manufacturing? Was, they're going to be big manufacturers going in there? Because that's going to be behind our house, and I just want to kind of understand what's going on.
You can, uh, just as a comment, you can refer back to Lisa to get some clarification on all of that, what you just said.
Well, I hope you consider that the four, three to five on an acre is quite, quite hefty. And that's when I'm hoping that you'll table it or go back and look at it and see if you can get something that's comparable to what's surrounding areas.
Thank you. Matt Webster, you're up. Welcome.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Um, Ms. Simpson especially for your response back to my email. Hopefully y'all got a chance. Councilmember, sorry, you didn't get the email. Uh, councilmembers, I sent an email to yesterday. Um, just wanted to hit on a couple of notes from it. Um, basically environmental impact statements or anything, if certain things been looked for. Uh, I know I've got pictures of billiard woodpeckers. Um, and there it is, the, say it wrong, uh, Schweitzens, Schweitzer's sunflowers. And when the Arbor's land was timbered, I know they were in there. Uh, I just didn't know if anyone had gone over and looked at them. Um, with those being endangered especially. Um, personally, we'd like to ask that you deny this resounding, not the annexation. Uh, I did not speak on the annexation last time, so, um, but anyway. Uh, if nothing else, table this for further discussion and look into it as a conditional permit. Sorry, Mr. Stone, be a little more work for you at this time, but a conditional permit would make things a whole lot better across the board, keep everybody's involvement in what does come. Excuse me. Uh, but thank you. Have a good weekend.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. All right, we're going to move down to the consent agenda. So, uh, since there was no request for change up in the adoption of the agenda, can I have a motion on this, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right. Approval for the consent agenda is on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
All around, we're good. All right, we're going to go to recognitions tonight. First up, Chief Collins, welcome back.
All right, town leaders and members of the community, tonight I have with me and the pleasure of introducing Donnie Rogers. Donnie has thirty years of law enforcement experience, twenty-five down in Lancaster and five here in Waxaw PD, and he's assigned to the Patrol Division. Donnie served with Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for twenty-five years, and while there, he was a shifts lieutenant for eleven years. In his last six years, he was assigned to District Three as the commander. Donnie and his wife, Andy, have an eleven-year-old son, Colton, and Donnie has two stepsons, Austin, age twenty-four, and Avery, age twenty-two. Donnie and Andy recently celebrated their eighteenth anniversary. Uh, while on his off time, Donnie enjoys fishing, exercise, and traveling, and I have seen him up in the gym on a few occasions, and he really does enjoy his exercise. So a little inspiration for everybody, all these younger kids in the back row back there trying to keep up with us old guys. This is Officer Rogers.
Welcome. Good to know you. Thank you very much, and thank you again, Chief, for having this effort at each one of our meetings, so we get to know who they are and they know who we are.
Sir, my pleasure.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. All right, next up is the recognition and oath of office for our new town clerk. I'm going to let Jeff open that up, and then I will be the one to administer the oath of office.
Thank you, Mayor. So it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Barbie Blackwell as the town's new town clerk. So just want to take a moment to congratulate her on that and let you know how great of a job she's been doing in her role as deputy town clerk now for about two years, maybe, maybe longer, just a little bit longer. And her experience runs a lot deeper than that, as she was the town clerk for, uh, the town of Marvin for a number of years prior to. Of course, she was part of the team with Melody, who will be moving on or has moved on, and we will provide her a separate recognition at our next meeting about her role in administration. But I'm just really, really delighted in these opportunities that, that we are able to allow and for both of our employees to grow and meet their career goals, and I'm real excited about that. She's been operating in this role as, as town clerk now for a couple of weeks, but I guess we have to make it officially official this evening with an oath of office. So I will leave that to the mayor to conduct at this time.
Very good. Barbie, welcome to the crew. I appreciate you and all the work that you do for us, so. All right, so.
Let's do that.
Yeah, let's do that. All right, so you can repeat after me. I, Barbie Blackwell, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as town clerk of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina, and that I will not allow my actions as town clerk to be influenced by personal or political friendships, personal?
Personal friendships.
Or obligations. So help me God. You're in.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to presentations tonight, and this one is by Travis Hardy. He's our, uh, financial auditor and from Strickland Hardy, so Travis, welcome. Good to see you again.
Good to be here. Thank you all.
This is our audit presentation.
All right. See if I can work this thing. It's new for me. Uh, Mayor and board members, thank you all. Uh, it's good to be here this evening. And with that, I am going to, um, go into this presentation, uh, and I'm going to go a little bit slower than I did last year, because we've got a few things that we kind of need to talk about and clarify and make sure everyone really understands, um, the report this year. First off, um, get to the right page, summarize what we did. We performed the financial statement audit, uh, of the town. We assisted with the preparation of the financial statements as well. In addition to that, um, we made anything that we observed that we thought was, um, imperative to bring to the attention of management, um, we did that as well during the course of the audit. Um, we consulted on any accounting matters that needed to be, uh, discussed, and also, obviously, the last one, we'll attend the board meeting to present the summary of the audit. Next thing is we are independent. We have to be independent in order to issue this report and also in order to issue the single audit report, which we did, uh, I believe for the, for my, my sake anyway, for the first time, uh, since we've been working on the audit. Okay, now to the heart of it, and I'm looking back and forth, and they say the same thing. I don't know why I'm doing that. Anyway, the main thing we want to talk about tonight is going to be the opinion, um, and I want to break this down into two things. One, governmental reporting is at two levels, okay? And we're going to talk about the upper level, the higher level called the governmental activities. And at this level, we are reporting on things such as capital assets, long-term debt, uh, your pension obligations. Those items are at this upper level that are not reflected down at the fund level. And so on this level of the governmental activities, we did issue a qualified opinion, okay? Now, the best would have been unmodified. Everything was good at that level if, if we had done that, which we did in the previous years. But this year, due to capital assets, um, not being accurately reported, um, we had no choice but to issue a modified opinion. And so with that, just the capital assets, um, as they are presented in the financial statements, we're saying we're not sure they're materially correct, okay? Everything else, we're okay with. Everything else is materially correct. The capital assets gave us a problem this year due to, um, the amount of capital assets that you guys have as a town and trying to use an Excel spreadsheet to keep up with all the capital assets, keep up with the depreciation, and all of that. It just became too much. Um, and with that, we looked at it, we analyzed it, we saw some things were missing. Depreciation wasn't calculated correctly, um, and so we just did not have, uh, a good comfort level that what was presented to us was materially correct. So at that level, again, governmental activities, we issued, um, this qualified opinion just for capital assets. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Now, let's drop down a level to the fund level, which is really your day-to-day activities, revenues coming in, expenses going out, salaries and all of that. At that level, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get, okay? So I want to, I want to stress that. At that level, everything looked good, okay? Um, now, I want to read this because we do make reference to, uh, another auditor. So I'm going to read it exactly as it says. "We expressed, um, an unmodified opinion based on the audit and the report of another auditor on the fair presentation of financial statements for each major fund, the aggregate remaining fund information, and the discreetly presented component unit." The component unit, which is your ABC store, we did not audit, so we have to rely on another auditor for that information, which is why we say, um, based on our audit and this, this other report. Wanted to clarify that, just to make sure everybody understood that as well. Now, for the first time since I've been doing this audit, we had a single audit here. Um, and that was because you received more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, or you had more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses of those federal funds. So with that, we had to audit the ma- uh, a major program. We had to look at the compliance requirements. Did the town meet those requirements? Uh, and all the regulations associated with it. So in regard to that federal program, we did issue an unmodified opinion on that as well. Again, the best you can get. Now, within the report, there's some information that's called, uh, required supplementary, supplementary information. That is a management's discussion, analysis, and also your pension liabilities for the, uh, leos, um, your proportionate share of the liabilities, and that general information. Again, um, is required, so we have to have it in the report. We do not audit that information, so I want to make sure, uh, everybody understands that as well. Uh, we are not required to audit it. We do not audit it, and we issue no opinion on that information, okay? That is a standard within Gatsby reporting. Every report you see says that same thing in their report. So, um, just to let you know, that information was not audited. Turn the page here, and there is some information in there that is not required, but is supplementary information to help the reader understand a little bit more of the basic financial statements. That information, we did audit, and we did some testing on it, and we issued sort of an opinion that says in relation to the basic financial statement, that information is materially correct and accurate. Okay, that's a lot of information to go over. So I hope everybody kind of got that and understands what we're saying there. Um, uh, the main thing, again, is just that one level, qualified. Everything else looked good, and it was just those capital assets. And I failed to mention, and I'm sorry, I failed to mention that I know for a fact that Jeff and Rosemary, uh, are both, they're working toward correcting that. They've already purchased, I believe, a software program to help with those capital assets. Um, so they're already taking, uh, some steps, being proactive and getting that corrected, and hopefully, um, if everything goes well in the next few months, that qualification will go away, and it will not be there again next year. So that's what we're looking forward to. Okay, now, I'm going to go down to, and I will use this little pointer for the first time over here. Right here is some areas that I want to discuss. As a result of the qualification, we have to issue an, um, a finding, okay? We issue a material weakness finding, simply because the capital assets, we're, we're not sure they're materially correct. They are probably materially misstated, so we have to issue a material finding, a material weakness finding. Um, and all that basically says is what I've already said. The, the controls are not in place to prevent a misstatement from happening within the financial statements, or they are not corrected, they're not identified and corrected in a timely manner. That's really what that means. Okay. Now, the second one there is a significant deficiency, which is less severe than a material weakness, and this particular finding deals with there being some budgets that were overspent. Um, is, uh, there were more expenditures than the budget allowed for at year end. I tried to, I went to bat for you guys with the LGC. Tried to explain to them it was not material, that, um, there were just some things that happened at year end, and that the budgets didn't get amended for it, and in the past, they've been okay with that. This year, for some reason, they would not allow it, and just said, no, we're not going to take it. There has to be a finding presented in the report for this. Um, so I was, kind of had my hands tied at that point. Um, and so we had to issue the finding. In fact, we had to come back and add that at the end later, after we had already basically issued the report. Um, so with that being said, again, it was just an oversight, I think. Rosie and I've talked about it, and probably something got moved right at year end or even after July one, but the budget wasn't amended to compensate for those extra expenses. Um, in my opinion, not a big deal, because it really wasn't a lot of money. Uh, but again, LGC didn't see it that way, so that's the reason for the, that's the reason for the finding and that probably, I'm sure, will not happen again. So just monitor the budget, so, okay.
Maybe, uh, grab a moment. So if I remember right, we're talking on the capital asset side because of all the new equipment or the vehicles?
The, yes, sir, all the, the leased vehicles, um, and then, uh, just the depreciation wasn't being calculated correctly. It was too much for that Excel spreadsheet. All right, now, I'm going to go over these next two. There's two letters that I have to present to you, which is, uh, those charged with governance. And a lot of this really is the same thing I've already talked about. So I'm going to go over this real quick, um, just to save time. The only thing I really want to mention in here are these two little indented paragraphs right here, um, where we talk about, uh, estimated numbers within your financial statements. Depreciation being one of them, because that is an estimated number due to estimating the useful life of the asset, and also the current portion, if I remember correctly. Um, yes, current portion of your compensated absences. Um, and that's just an estimated number of who's going to take leave during the next fiscal year and how much that's going to cost. Those numbers are estimated, and they are allowable under GAAP rules, so, um, no worries with that. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, uh, being an estimated amount. Okay, we're going to move through this. We've talked about it already, um, so no need to go any, any further in this report. The next report is an AUC two sixty-five letter, and that just really is a letter where I just basically have to present to you the two findings that we've already talked about. It's just in writing, um, but it has to be presented or given to you, um, as a required, as a requirement of the audit, so. We've already talked about them, so I'm not going to talk about them again. So we've already talked about them, so I'm not gonna talk about them again. It just goes into a little more detail as to what those two findings are. Okay, now for the fun stuff, the graphs, pretty pictures. Real quick, this first one is your governmental fund balance. And this is, again, now we're gonna be at down at the fund level, the day-to-day operations, and this is where, uh, again, everything was fine. Um, this chart here is not the same one I'm looking at. Did I go too far? That is not the same one. Why are we not lining up, Jeff? And I can't even read that one. Is it a say governmental fund balance? Um, okay, I see where it's at. Okay. This is your governmental fund balance for, uh, all of your funds combined. And you can see from twenty-one to twenty-two, the total increased about five million dollars. Okay, that, if you look at the unassigned fund balance number, uh, and you can see that's really, really where that five million is. Um, that is your unassigned balance at June thirtieth, that you have available for expenses in twenty-two that are not already accounted for. Um, the first number up there, non, non-spendable, is really just things you've already spent, but we have to reflect that down in fund balance, so that money's already gone. The restricted is anything that you have in fund balance that's already restricted by some rule, regulation, law, or something of that nature. Your committed is things that you as a board have committed to a future expense. Assigned is a little bit lesser of a committed amount, but it's already been assigned to some expenditure, expenditure in the subsequent period. And then again, your unassigned is just what's available. And you can see there, it's almost fifteen million dollars. And again, this is in total, your general fund, your capital projects, your capital outlays, and all your other special revenue funds. Okay. This page here is-
Just a quick question for those who like it simplified. Like the unassigned fund balance would be like our savings account, so to speak.
Yes, it's, it's money that's left over at year end that truly is your money that's available for next year's expenditures that has not been obligated already.
Sort of like if I wanted to do it to like my home, personal finance, I could assume it'd be sort of like my savings account.
Right, okay.
Just as a, a, another thing to bring up too, the, uh, LGC has, um, a requirement that municipalities and such have a, at least a minimum of eight percent unassigned fund balance. And, uh, we have a, a standing policy to maintain at least thirty percent unassigned fund balance.
Okay, um, governmental revenues by fund source. Um, and as you can tell, in every year, in the past five years, obviously, your ad valorem taxes are your biggest funding source, uh, and followed by your intergovernmental, which is your federal, state funds that you make in. And then, of course, you've got then your, um, other taxes, and then your, just your other miscellaneous revenues. And on this page, actually, it just gives you the numbers to make that up. So your total revenues for FY twenty-two was twenty point six million dollars compared to twenty-one of fifteen point eight million. Expenses, uh, this is just a graph showing your expenses by your, um, your functions. Um, it's kinda hard to read, cause there's a lot of them on there, there's a lot of lines there. But you can tell here, uh, that your public safety, uh, for all five years is running pretty high, which is the second set from the left, um, which would be right, oh, wrong one. This group right here is your public safety expenses. Um, and then it's pretty much followed by your general administration, which is the first set of lines here, your bar graphs here. Now, this chart or this page here just gives you those numbers. Um, for FY twenty-two, about fifteen point eight million in expenses compared to twenty-one of about twelve point three million. Okay, your general fund, uh, this is your fund balance, real quick. Eighteen million for the total at year end. Uh, fourteen point nine of that is unassigned, and that is just your general fund, fund balance at that point right here. So I wanted to note down at the bottom, it's, oh, did it again? I'm used to this thing. Right down here, it's kinda hard to read. Um, but the LGC gave me these numbers after I input this into their spreadsheet. Uh, LGC fund balance available fifty-seven point nine eight percent in twenty-twenty, eighty-two percent in twenty-one. And in twenty-two, you have a hundred and thirty-eight percent of unassigned fund balance. That's huge to have an unassigned fund balance, which goes even further, uh, than what Jeff alluded to, thirty percent. Now, the average of a similar unit is forty-six percent. So you can see how healthy you are as a town. Uh, this is just your general fund revenue source. And again, obviously, your ad valorem taxes are gonna be your highest, uh, source of revenue there, which is indicated by the blue purple looking line there. And here are your expenses, again, just for your general fund. Um, it's gonna mirror the other, obviously, cause your public safety's sitting there along with your general administration. Uh, so it's gonna run about the same as the other one, yeah. This is your general fund working capital. Basically, current assets over current liabilities. And for your ratio, uh, at the bottom, again, kinda hard to read. For twenty-one, your ratio was twenty point eight two percent, and in twenty-two, it jumped up to twenty-four point five seven percent. Um, and that's a, that's a good number to have. The higher that number, obviously, the better you are. Uh, all of this to say y'all are in very good shape financially speaking. Okay, I'm not gonna bore you with the rest of this. Um, these next things are just journal entries, but again, I have to provide to you because we made some journal entries, um, to the general ledger after we received it. Uh, and so these are just some entries that we made. Um, but again, I'm required to give them to you. So in your packet, you have them, and I guess my obligation's been met at this point. Um, so that's it. That's all I've got for you. I'll answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions to anybody? Commissioner Morey?
Uh, just if you could clarify, you, you mentioned that, uh, the Excel spreadsheet really wasn't up to snuff with the way it reports these things. Uh, so for people that are watching, can you just kinda go into it a little bit more?
Sure, um, the, the spreadsheet was very elaborate in formulas. It was formula-driven to try to calculate depreciation, um, on a yearly basis. Uh, and somewhere along the line, um, the formulas got either lost or ju- they just got jumbled up or something. The formulas just weren't working anymore. So it didn't, it didn't bring prior year's depreciation forward. So it was almost like it lost two years' worth of depreciation, um, and almost like it started over again. And it was all, it was because the amount of information that was in there, um, and the size of the Excel spreadsheet itself just wasn't calculated correctly, um, and it was all due to just the formulas within the spreadsheet itself.
So basically, when we, when we upgrade the package, that will punch the numbers that say. That should pretty much resolve the, the, the problem. So as we grow as a town, there are some of these growing pains that happen, and it's as simple as a software fix, just like any other tech that we have in our homes. Is that essentially what I'm, what I'm to understand in the residence?
This package, once you put in certain information, then it's gonna calculate your depreciation. It's gonna do the roll forwards for you, and we'll not have this issue.
Great, thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Any comments, questions?
I just had a, just an observation, I guess. I noticed, uh, year over year, in the, in the five-year chart from, uh, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, the, uh, ad valorem, uh, taxes have, have gone up. Um, and would it be fair to say you could attribute that to the growth, natural growth of a town?
Uh, I would absolutely think that, um, and I'm not sure. I've only been on this audit for a few years now, um, so I'm not sure what the, uh, your tax rate was in relation, or you know, if it went up. I know it was a pretty good jump in twenty-two. Um, uh, in reevaluations, I'm not sure if that was part of it in twenty-two, um, along with any kind of, uh, uh, rate increase. Um, so that is, and the growth is definitely gonna bring your, your tax revenue, uh, a good bit. And with the growth, I, even I know y'all are having, the few times I come down during the year, uh, is gonna generate more revenue.
Jeff, you wanna add to that? I can see you teeing up there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It's, it's primarily tax-based growth and then the revaluation. We have not raised the tax rate in six years.
I just wanna be clear on that. Uh, that was gonna be my comment, as well as the, the rate has stayed the same.
Yes, that's correct.
And then, I'm only making this comment because I, because you did call it out in the, um, uh, governmental expenditures. Uh, the, um, uh, second highest line item that we have is for public safety. But in the first role of government, being to provide safety and security to its citizens, would you agree that, um, having public safety, such as, uh, first responders, is being the second highest line item in the governmental expenditures is a normal thing?
I would absolutely hope you see it that way. Absolutely.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Any comments, thoughts? All right, Travis, thank you very much. Appreciate that. A lot of good information. It's good to hear that we're in good shape.
Good deal. Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
All right, next up, we're gonna open up some public hearings here, so we have three items to talk about tonight. So can I have a motion to open up the public hearings? Move, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around. All right, we're open. I think, uh, Madison, you upped a bat three times on this one, so we're gonna hear a lot of you, so, uh, welcome and thank you. And, uh-
Thank you.
You've got the floor.
Yep, good evening, everyone. So one of the many text amendments you will see tonight, this is a modification to our accessory structure requirements. Uh, if you remember back at the October two-by-two, this was a discussion item, uh, specific to outdoor stages. So petition TA zero one four four two five dash twenty twenty-two is a request by the Town of Waxell Planning Department to amend section four point five, general uses, uh, and this is accessory structures. Uh, we're adding specific requirements for outdoor stages. So the requested changes are below on your screen. Um, so pretty much, uh, we're adding a subsection G. And it reads, "An outdoor stage as an accessory structure shall follow these requirements." One, shall follow the topography of the property and locate stage as the lessened noise for residential areas. Uh, two, the stage shall be designed with sound-absorbing materials, such as foam, carpet, and acoustic panels to reduce excessive noises. And then, three, uh, the addition of noise barriers shall be used. So those are your masonry walls, acoustic fencing, large planters, and evergreen shrubs. And then, if necessary, the zoning administrator shall require an acoustic consultant to prepare a sound reduction plan. So at the November fifteenth planning board meeting, they recommended, uh, the text amendment move forward to the Board of Commissioners. Once staff had time to make the needed modifications, uh, to these requested changes. So, uh, we had something on there that was kinda very open-ended, so we wanted to, to tone it in or bring it in a little bit to, uh, have further clarity. And so these will be the requested actions for next BOC meeting. And that is it for this slide, and I'll just go ahead and float back to this for questions.
Okay, Commissioner Simpson has a question.
Two, actually, two questions. So is this for permanent structures versus somebody wanted to erect a stage that's something for temporary?
So we are using it as for permanent. This is more for your permanent outdoor stages, those that are built, uh, for the long term.
Well, I was just thinking, cause I know, like, when we do events, we erect a stage.
Yes, you, you build a stage, and then four or five hours later, you deconstruct.
So that, this would not apply to that type of circumstance?
Yeah, this is for the more permanent, uh, more permanent stages that we, um, may have issues with in the future.
And then the other question I have here, it says, "The zoning minister shall hire an acoustic consultant if needed." Who, who pays for that cost?
So it should be shall require, uh, I may have mistyped hire instead of require. Yes, yeah, I, I'd updated it on the PowerPoint slide and then, uh, in my text amendment packet, but everything had been sent out to the board. So it should say shall require an acoustic consultant.
As that does there.
Yes, yeah. So what is on the screen is correct.
The package is different than what's on the screen.
Yeah.
And then the cost is borne by the applicant?
Yeah, cause the, uh, the, the issue that we had with the first initial language was open-ended, and then, um, you know, we want to have it as clear as possible and outline the requirements rather than having everything up for interpretation or, uh, having the ordinance be questioned.
Okay, any other questions on that particular one? All right, go to the next one. You do. Commissioner Hall?
So would we, would we make the change that Commissioner Simpson had suggested? That, um, this is for permanent structures and not temporary?
We could specify that, where the language change would incorporate that. So it could be, uh, a permanent outdoor stage as an accessory structure.
Yeah, okay. Um, and I guess I'll ask the dumb question, is this is for structures going forward and not ones that are current?
Correct.
Great, thank you. All right, second one.
Item number two, uh, this is a text amendment to modify buffer requirements.
All right, well, well-
Sorry, Madison, I just, I remember what I had before. Was, so was it a unanimous decision from the planning board to put, to, uh, recommend this go forward?
Yes, yep. Yep, they, uh, wanted to make it as easy on staff as possible, so they just asked that we update them with what we come up with and what the board sees. So petition TA zero one four two two seven dash twenty twenty-two.
Mayor, you need to be moving the public hearings forward, not Matt. Madison is moving to the second one, and you haven't-
Announced it?
You haven't announced that, that, uh, that, that as to, uh, petition, uh, TA, uh, zero one four four two five, that that public hearing is over, and now moving into public hearing for the new text amendment.
Okay.
If there, I don't, anybody signed up to speak to any of these, but that would be an opportunity for them to speak after.
And that was gonna be one of my comments at the end, that there wasn't, for the record, there wasn't anybody to speak for all three of them. So that's why I was letting them go, but, all right, we'll go to the second one, public hearing, text amendment. TA zero one four two two seven, twenty twenty-two. Now you can go.
Thank you. Uh, so this petition is a request by the planning department to amend section eight point seven, buffering requirements for non-residential uses. So currently, the language states, "In instances where the required buffer width exceeds that of the required setback distance, the buffer requirement shall be satisfied by the minimum setback requirement." So for example, if a buffer requirement is for twenty-five feet, but the setback for the property is ten feet, uh, the ten-foot buffer would, would be equal to that of the setback. So we're changing it to read, "In instances where the required buffer width exceeds that of the required setback distance, the buffer requirement shall apply." So if, again, in another example, if the buffer requirement would be twenty- So if, again, another example, if the buffer requirement would be twenty-five feet, but the setback was ten feet, uh, the buffer would still need to be the twenty-five feet there, uh, as what the ordinance states. And so I know this came up, uh, about the zoning administrator giving, uh, some leeway for certain properties where having that buffer may, you know, depending on the shape of the lot or how it is, uh, give some leniency for that, so. In section eight-point-three, so this is talking about all of chapter eight, uh, the zoning administrator may waive or modify these requirements of this chapter. And then at the, uh, the last kinda section, it says, "Or where strict application of the provisions would be impractical or serve no useful purpose." Um, so we have that kinda modification requirement there, 'cause, uh, we have some oddly shaped parcels in Waxall, and so for those non-residential uses, sometimes, um, the buffer width could impede or, uh, not allow the project to move forward. The Planning Board reviewed this text amendment in October and unanimously recommended approval. And then, uh, requested action would be to, uh, close the public hearing at the end of the third text amendment.
Alright, um, any questions on this one for our presenter?
Let me see, a little bit more clarification. So we're just talking about lots that are, parcels that are small. And would there be any topography type of examples or?
Trying to think of a good example for this. Um, so it's more, it's less on the waiver for topography or shape of the lot, it's more about the buffer itself. So in ordinance now, um, you know, if you have a, a parcel that has plenty of frontage, has plenty of size, right now, uh, the buffer would be the size of the setback in the case that the setback is smaller. So, um, it's more about, uh, the difference between the buffer and the setback requirement for this. I don't know if that helped, that didn't help any, um.
Well, we also, yeah, we also gave some latitude in this one, if I remember right, to allow, uh, certain circumstances to be administered by the zoning administrator. If we had some conflict in the lot size versus the setback.
Yes.
This whole area.
Yep, so pretty much, um, right now, if, uh, you have a setback that is smaller than what our ordinance requires for a buffer, the setback will be the size of your buffer. So in this scenario, we're, uh, pretty much requiring a greater buffer in some instances where the setback is smaller.
So it's, it's essentially, you know, taking the larger, the greater of the two. Unless there's a circumstance that would preclude its use and then keep us out of a taking issue. So that's where the zoning administrator would have that latitude.
Yeah, it's, it's really to, to help require the buffer and the buffer to stay there for a joint, uh, joining property owners. Um, again, for instance, if the setback is small, um, there would be a smaller buffer, but with this, the buffer would be required to maintain, which is typically larger than the setback.
Any other questions, Jeff? I saw you teeing up again.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I just, it, maybe this might, might help, so when you have, when you have a, a, a setback, like say a, a side setback and say that's, that's ten feet for any given property, but then we have a buffer requirement that's twenty-five feet from the, on the perimeter of a property from, uh, one use to another, so what that's saying is that in that instance, then the buffer would apply as opposed to the, uh, setback requirement, so it would be twenty-five feet instead of ten feet. But then the, the waiver that's discussed then does give the zoning administrator some latitude to, uh, to make a determination on that in extraneous circumstances similar to other issues or items like that that come up regularly in any plan or anything.
Yeah, to go a little more, you would, you would lose fifteen feet of, of tree buffer with Jeff's example. Um, so this again is just having the, the buffer be, uh, have the buffer exist.
The buffer didn't supersede the setback.
It's a lot to absorb, but, uh, for those visual ones, right? Kinetic. Alright, and on this one there as well, for the record, there was nobody signed up on the public hearing side, so I will move it along to the third item. Public hearing on text amendment petition TA zero-one-four-one-two-one-two-zero-two-two. Madison, you're up again.
Thank you, Mayor. So this petition, I'm gonna give a little background information on this, uh, this was, uh, a very popular case here in North Carolina. It's, uh, Schroeder versus the City of Wilmington. So the City of Wilmington was having a larger number of short-term rentals, and so the city imposed, uh, pretty much a lottery requirement, so. If you operated a short-term rental or wanted to operate one, you had to apply for a lottery system. And so they were selected based off of that, so based off the luck, the luck of the draw. So in this scenario, those that had been operating short-term rentals, uh, for many years were then required to fall in suit. And those that were not selected, even though they'd been operating their short-term rental for many years, were required to stop. So this case went to the North Carolina Court of Appeals, and state law prohibits a registration requirement for short-term rentals. So the statute states, uh, "May not require any owner or manager of rental property to obtain any permit or permission to, to lease or rent residential real property or to register rental property with the local government." So with this, the town, uh, can still require, um, certain aspects of it, like common development regulations, so. For example, um, you know, require additional parking or require, uh, this used to specific zoning districts. However, uh, with our certain short-term rental requirements now, uh, we require that they maintain an up-to-date certificate of insurance. And so this can be interpreted as requiring registration. And so by, uh, our recommendation, uh, state law, and then Charlie's recommendation, we are, uh, asking to remove these sections from our short-term rental requirements. And so these are specifically item E and then item F. And so we are asking that these be removed from our, from our ordinance.
Question, how do we get notification that a property owner has, uh, initialized that action? They, they just one day decide that they're going to rent their property out a certain way, short-term rental?
Yeah, so really the only way of us knowing is if they, most of the time, they will call and ask, and we say, "Hey, this requires based on use permit," and then in which they would apply and let us know that they are operating a short-term rental. Most of the time, we don't get phone calls about these particular uses, um, and we're not actively searching Airbnb or VRVO for, for these, these properties, but. Based on state law, we're just wanting to kinda cover our requirements right now. So yeah, it's pretty much just like, uh, operating, uh, a business. A business can open in town without getting his own use permit. A lot of times, they may not know, or if our code enforcement team, uh, notices a new business sign going up and we realize that they don't have his own use permit.
Eventually, it gets caught up to, is what I'm saying.
Eventually, yeah, yeah, but short-term rentals are typically harder to spot, uh, rather than a commercial use where, you know, there's a new business or a new signage or, or something.
Be interesting one to enforce. Commissioner Simpson? Oh, you're shutting yours off. That's a first, right?
So to follow with this, um, after the Planning Board reviewed and recommended this text amendment, uh, the planning staff is recommending the removal of section A as well. So section A of our, uh, special requirements talks about the maximum occupancy of the rental based off the International Building Code. And after a conversation with our chief building inspector, uh, the building code does not specify maximum occupancy for, uh, residential homes. So, uh, this would be a requirement that we can enforce because it doesn't exist, so we're wanting to go ahead and remove it as well.
Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, Planning Board reviewed and unanimously recommended approval. And then I'm here for any additional questions.
Any questions for our presenter? And also just to know for the record, there were, there was no one to, uh, sign up to speak on this one as well. Any questions? Alright, Madison, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're gonna entertain a motion to close the public hearings, if you would. Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearings.
All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, unanimous, thank you. Alright, we'll move over to old business. We've got, uh, Lisa Thompson, Planning and Inspections Director, this is a decision for voluntary annexation petition one-eight-two-two-nine Yarborough Village. Lisa, floor is yours with moment.
Good evening, thank you. A request has been submitted by the applicant, Tim Samuels, with BRD Land and Investment LP for the annexation. It's approximately two-hundred-and-forty-two-point-two-eight acres. The property is combined of eight parcels and it's located off Highway seventy-five west of Hermitage Place subdivision. To orient you to the site, the subject site is outlined in red, um, with the yellow star, you have Highway seventy-five running east-west and then Old Waxall Monroe Road to the west, and then the eight parcels I, um, just mentioned are, uh, numbered in the diagram to the bottom left. With any annexation, we are guided by, we have to, we are required to follow state statute, it's one-sixty-A dash thirty-three. On November twenty-second, we went through steps one through three, we made sure that the applicant was signed by the owner. Uh, the clerk verified the sufficiency of the application. We, um, published a date for the public hearing, which was held December thirteenth. We didn't have anyone sign up to speak specifically for the annexation itself, just for the rezoning. And then tonight, we are looking for a decision, um, gives you guys the authority to pass an ordinance annexing the territory described in the petition. So staff recommends a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-one. It's for annexation petition eighteen dash two-two-nine to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Waxall.
Okay, thank you, Lisa, appreciate that. Alright, any, uh, questions, thoughts, comments from the group, the board? We've been through this, uh, last meeting on the public hearing side. No comments seen? Alright, I'm gonna look for a motion. If I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance zero, uh, number ORD two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-one for annexation petition eighteen dash twenty, uh, twenty-two-nine to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Waxall.
Motion's on the floor for ad- adoption of the, uh, motion. All in favor? Everybody, great, thank you, appreciate that. Next up, decision on the Yarborough Village rezoning petition, RZ zero-one-four-four-seven-three-two-zero-two-two, you're up again.
Thank you. Uh, petition zero-one-four-four-seven-three twenty-two-two is a request by the applicant, again, Tim Samuels, BRD Land and Investment. It's a general rezoning map amendment, it's from Union County, R-twenty and RA-forty to a combination of Waxall Neighborhood Center, R-three and R-four residential. Again, it's property located off Highway seventy-five east of Hermitage Place. I will skip through, uh, this slide. On the screen is your current zoning map, all the colors represent, uh, the zoning districts within town. If it's white, it's unincorporate, unincorporated Union County. Um, to the north, we have Union County, that's RA-forty. To the east is RA-forty within Union County, and then this purple area is the Employment Center, um, which we heard about, uh, a public comment this evening, that is the zoning district that would allow for, um, employment-type uses. Any industrial or distribution or business services type of uses. To the south, you have R-twenty and then R-one Waxall in green. And then to the west, you have R-three in yellow, which is the Hermitage Place subdivision. Wysacki Park is R-one, and then we have the Rogers property, which is zoned R-four. Anytime we redo a rezoning, we wanna ensure it's compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. This plan has been around since two thousand nine. It tells our residents what we want and the infrastructure is needed as we grow. It's used to guide development. We send this plan and our growth projections to Union County Public Works for water and sewer planning needs. We send it to Union County Public Schools for school facility needs. We send it to the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, NCDOT, for any transportation studies. And it also aligns with the Union County Comprehensive Plan, so this should be no surprise to any outside agencies. We also use this plan to get developers to build park facilities and road networks and infrastructure, um, on their dime, not on the existing residents. If there's a proposed line on the map for a transportation road network or a greenway, the developer is required to build it. Um, so if you look at the area in purple on the right, this is in our G-three intended growth area, meaning it's an area that has necessary infrastructure to support urban-scale mixed-use development patterns within close proximity to the current town limits, where transportation routes and utility infrastructure is either present or can be easily extended to support urban types of development. This comprehensive plan goes through a very rigorous, extensive public input process. And again, it's updated every few years, we are currently going through, uh, an update as we speak, looking out to twenty-fourty. The proposed zoning is for twenty-one-point-two acres of Neighborhood Center off of seventy-five, what you see in purple. Um, this is a, this is, um, allows for office and retail type of development, walkable mixed-use type of development. It's a good transition from the larger Employment Center that we talked about to the east and then the existing residential to the west. There's also a proposed seventy acres of R-four in yellow. This is consistent with the adjacent Rogers property rezoning to the west, where we allow flexibility in order to get that southern parkway built that connects Old Waxall Monroe Road to seventy-five. And then we have about a hundred-and-thirty-seven acres of R-three, single-family residential, this is your typical, um, subdivision you see throughout town. This is just the initial zoning, uh, per state statute, we are required to place zoning on the annexed property within sixty days. We are following our comprehensive plan to guide us, which again has received, um, public input and has been, um, approved and on the books since two thousand nine. We do not have a development plan or site plan, um, on record in the town at this time. The, uh, draft plan use, uh, land use plan consistency statement says the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the Town of Waxall. It is reasonable and in the public interest as it allows for a variety of housing options. It is consistent with the recommended growth and density for the area and will allow for the development of a needed transportation corridor. Planning Board recommended approval, five to one, on November fifteenth. And then the, uh, staff is recommending a motion to approve the petition and then adopt that land use plan consistency statement as presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any thoughts, questions, comments from the board?
I just had a question, the, the one vote that did not, uh, approve, what was the reasoning there? Was there concern?
Um, they wanted to see a plan for that Neighborhood Center area, so he suggested that it be zoned R-four. Uh, we were worried that if it's zoned R-four, that we would just get that residential development and along seventy-five, we want those non-residential uses. So the plan recommends Neighborhood Center.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts, comments around the horn? Commissioner Hall?
That Neighborhood Center is consistent with the, um, future land use plan.
It is.
And this is an initial zone that's required by state law.
Right, we have to give it zoning within sixty days.
Commissioner Simpson?
Just, I'm not sure if you know this off the top of your head, the Rogers Pond Development was zoned R-four. Do you know what the, the density of that project is?
Yeah, it's a little over two units per acre, I think two-point-oh-one units per acre.
So even though it was zoned R-four, which would allow them to have four units per acre, it's only a little over two units per acre?
Right, there's a major power line, a two-hundred-foot due power line easement along there. And then with that, um, uh, bypass, the, the parkway, um, that's another hundred-foot right-of-way that we asked for. This has some similar constraints with floodplain and wetlands, um, so.
So they had constraints based on the topography, the floodplain, wetlands?
Right, and that's what we're seeing kind of throughout town with the land that's left.
Please go ahead.
So I also wanted to, um, because I did get some calls and some, um, emails from some citizens that had some concerns and I just wanted to ask you a little bit about them, maybe clarify. And I think I heard what you said tonight, is that this was an annexation request that we approved to allow this to make the town more contiguous, more, um, fill in the doughnut hole, I guess you would say. And part of that too is, um, one of the concerns that we had or that I've been hearing about is, is sewer capacity things. But this has no project come forth for us. This is just strictly a annexation and us putting zoning on in the first sixty days. It has nothing to do what may be in the works to be built or developed because we have not received as a town anything official to what that plan may be.
Correct. Their next step would be a preliminary plot, which would be reviewed by the planning board and again by you all for approval.
So anything that's out there right now, and I know Mr. Stone was here and spoke to us, that is really speculative. Maybe a plan, but until it gets finalized or comes in formally, there's, there's all speculation.
Yeah, we have not seen a site plan for this site.
So nothing has really come forward, other than just this request?
Right.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other thoughts, comments? Commissioner Hall, see the button going?
Yeah, no, I, I love where Commissioner Simpson's going with all this. So the, um, the, uh, ordinances and design standards that we have in place as a town, uh, would you, would you argue are far superior to that of the county? If this were to be a county project, uh, and I mean things like tree save and, um, things of that nature?
Correct. The county has it in their comprehensive plan, all of that R-four area in yellow and the NC has industrial uses. And then they have that southern portion as residential, which is two to three units per acre. So that, if it did come in through the county, um, they would be allowed to have those uses. This is not what's on the table for us this evening, um.
Industrial uses, could, you give me one example of what an industrial u- use from Union County would be?
A distribution center.
Whereas we've been talking about things like light manufacturing, like maybe medical assemblies, things like that.
Right.
Commissioner, Commissioner Simpson?
More of a comment, so, um, just, just to kind of go back to what I was saying, is things being speculative. I mean, no offense, but the way the economy is and things and constraints, like by the time dirt could potentially ever be turned, it could be significant five, six, seven, ten years out. And then the other piece, part of the county, if this was to get developed under the county, would they be required to put any roadways in or like the wa- the bypass or the, the Waxar Parkway or any connectivity or any added addition for our transportation?
They would not.
And so I know, like, for me, I hear one of the biggest concerns, we just finished a community survey, that traffic and congestion was, I think, one of our top, top things. And this would allow us to, to connect our transportation network or plan through some of these parcels through this southern area, correct?
Right, um, we already have, you'll see the preliminary plot next month, but again, in orange is the Rogers property. They are dedicating a hundred-foot right-of-way, um, and building a two-lane road section to go through their property in orange. And then we'll, um, it's a required on the, the trap, the, um, master transportation plan. Um, so we would require it again to go all the way up to seventy-five. So anyone could take Waxall, uh, Monroe Road, you know, just south of those power line easements and be able to head out east without going into downtown. And our ordinance would require that without any kind of special zoning.
Okay.
One more question off of that, so, you know, often we hear complaints from residents that the developers are building the roads, um, before they bring in the homes. Now, would the roads be built before there would be a certificate of occupancy issued? So the roads would be there soon as somebody moved into that house?
Yes. They als- they'll also have to do a traffic impact analysis to mitigate any additional traffic. Um, they could phase that, so the mitigations are concurrent with their, um, number of homes at that time for that phase.
Only once something comes before us as a development, which there is nothing on the table right now, correct?
Yes.
And two, that there's nothing before us with regard to the development, um, and we're just merely doing, um, the annexation and the zoning on the property now. And then it will come back to us, to the planning board and then to us, with any design plans or what is going to be developed, how it's going to look, as well as how we are moving forward with the roadways.
Correct.
Commissioner Maury, any comments, thoughts? Okay, very good. Alright, any other questions, comments around the horn? Alright, I'm gonna look for a motion, so who wants to make the motion?
Make a motion to approve general rezoning petition, RZ zero-one-four-four-seven-three-dash-two-zero-two-two. And reasonable and consistent statement as presented.
Okay, do we need to read that in the record, Charlie? Or can we go with just the statement?
Well, yeah, you can't just go with the statement since you made that as part of the motion.
Alright, motions on the table for, uh, an adoption of, uh, the, uh, or to approve the general rezoning petition, RZ zero-one-four-four-seven-three-two-zero-two-two, so motions up, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Alright, we'll move over to new business, thank you Lisa. So this one is, uh, Dina is gonna be up on this one here, new business, the award construction contract for the downtown park, phase two.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Well, we are moving right along with our downtown park and we're here tonight to talk about phase two and awarding, uh, the contract. Uh, we had the opening of our, um, bid for the phase two and J.D. Goodrum was the lowest responsible bidder and, um, finished with Mr. John Wood. He did the bid tabulations and found that everything scoped out. Also, it meets our budget for the phase two of the park. Just so, more background about J.D. Goodrum, they are actually our, um, phase one contractor. So they're doing a great job and this should be a easy transition, um, into phase two. The motion for tonight is to, um, ask y'all's permission, uh, to move forward with phase two and to give our town manager, um, the authorization, uh, to ex- to execute the contract for the designated amount. I always mess that up.
You can choose another amount if you want.
I can go higher.
Alright, um.
That's it.
End of the presentation, okay, comments, we'll go to Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I just did a, had a point of clarification that Hall Contracting Company is of no relation.
Oh.
Oh.
Alright, any other, uh, questions, comments for our presenter? We're halfway through this, uh, project now, we're getting ready to the, to the short strokes on it, so, which is really good. So, uh.
Just as a quick comment, this, this phase is where you'll see the, the real cool stuff start to come out of the ground.
Everything is gonna go vertical now.
It's really gonna look different in the spring and summer, it's gonna be awesome.
Long time coming.
Yes, very exciting.
Alright, any other thoughts, comments around this one? We'd like to get this thing going in vertical, so, uh, if there are no, uh, further comments, thoughts, questions, I'm gonna look for a, a motion on this one too.
I'll make a motion to award construction contract for downtown park, phase two, to J.D. Goodrum, Inc. in the amount of two million, six-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And to authorize the town manager to execute said contract. Why does it say that on my paper? Okay, so, I'll make that motion with the corrected amount.
Alright.
Well, the, the, the amount actually is two million, six-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine and sixty-eight cents. So I, I, I guess I see what probably the, the, uh, PowerPoint one didn't get changed for the amount because we did not, in the first write-in of it, we did not deduct out the alternate five, so.
Oh, so my amount is correct?
Your amount is correct.
Two million, six-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. And to authorize the town manager to execute said contract.
As on the screen and the, in the document. Okay, any other thoughts, comments as we go through this? Motion is up. All in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, thank you, unanimous.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dina. Alright, we have another one on the, uh, TAP award. This is approval of resolution of intent. So this one's gonna take a little explanation by Matt to kind of really understand what we're doing here, so, welcome Matt. And, uh, Matt is our town engineer and assistant town manager, welcome.
Good, thank you, good evening. This one, you talk about that was a long time coming, this one is a long time coming. So I'm very excited to bring forward the intent to award the TAP grant. So a little background on the subject, uh, we did, we were able to hold and open the formal bids for the project, uh, in December. We got three bids and, and, uh, the lowest bid, lowest apparent bidder was Nissari Development, uh, with a bid of one-point-two million dollars. Town staff reviewed the bids, uh, they were in order and we recommend the award of the contract to Nissari Development LLC. Technically, under the terms of the agreement with NCDOT and the funding, uh, requirements for the grant, we were, DOT is required to concur with the award prior to formally executing the contract. Because of the cost difference between the estimate and the bid, we had to, um, provide to them our intent to, to go ahead and award despite the, uh, the discrepancy. So that's what we're doing here, it's a formality, a little housekeeping. We'll come forward, i- if we do approve the resolution, then we'll come forward, uh, the next time and actually have the concurrence from DOT and then make the official award and ability to execute the contract. So the, what we're having to do here is, is simply provide and, and a motion for a resolution of intent to accept. And the, the key here is, uh, with concurrence from DOT, so there is a, uh, an if, then, if you will. So the specifics of the resolution are again, to declare the intent to award the bid to Nissari. Um, and then you have the, the standard language of, of resolutions. The action required would, to make a motion to approve that resolution to award the bid to Nissari. And upon approval by the board, town staff will then seek concurrence from NCDOT. And upon receipt of that concurrence, DOT will, uh, allow us to execute the contract. When that occurs, the availability date will be Feb- February first, twenty-three, or upon a written notice to proceed if we're able to move quicker than that. Assuming we do execute, uh, the contractor will then be able to order their materials, coordinate with their subcontractors. Um, the completion date is, is set as a hundred and one, a hundred and eighty days from the availability or the notice to proceed, whichever comes first. Basically, we're looking at a July completion date if, if everything goes to schedule. Then a pre, a pre-construction meeting will be held to coordinate the scheduling of all the activities with the, uh, contractor, the town and our, um, consultant in contract administration. At that point, we'll have all the, I think, the details that everybody's excited to find out about, which is the start, the, the, um, the actual schedule. And then, um, again, we'll, we'll be working closely with the, with the, with the contractor and our downtown director to facilitate all the interruptions to businesses. And, and when we're working in that area, it's gonna be a lot of disruption, a lot of things to coordinate so that we can, uh, as much as possible, keep those building, those businesses operating, uh, and minimize the impacts. And ideally, the goal would be to cut a ribbon, uh, either ahead of or in conjunction with the Fourth of July festivities. And I think everybody will be very excited when we have this behind us and get to enjoy the fruits of all this labor. Uh, just as a, as an alternative, if we were to fail to award the bid within sixty days of the opening, those, those proposals, all those prices would be invalidated. We would have to rebid, resulting in further delays, uh, in, in completion and, and most likely cost increases as the market continues to get more and more expensive. At this point, before we move to the motion, I'd open sort of questions.
Any questions, comments, buddy, buddy? I mean, this is six years, probably predates most everyone here. Close, you started, you guys, you two started it. Six years and lots of promises and a lot of work and a lot of cooperative effort. I gotta give you a lot of credit for.
Well, I mean, again.
Moving this thing to this point right now.
We were committed, it's a great project. I mean, it was worth it, we, if, if we'd have known that DOT and COVID were gonna do this, I think we would have gone in a different direction and, and then had it done. But this is, this is what kind of the direction we've been, um, required to move, so, patience, patience is, uh, has been key here. And, uh, and again, we'll, I think we'll show the reward, the benefit will be, will be well worth all the effort.
A lot of people are looking forward to it.
Right, absolutely.
We need to deliver on that promise.
Absolutely, that's my goal.
That's great. Any other thoughts, comments, Commissioner Hall?
I, I know we've spoken, uh, casually about this before, but i- is the town gonna do anything, uh, to accommodate some of the businesses that might be interrupted from this?
Oh, absolutely, so I mean, again, there are, there are gonna be methodologies that the contractor will put in place to safe up the job site, um, and, and enable with customers and, and deliveries to be made to those businesses. Uh, it's, it's not atypical work, you know, this happens all the time in, in, in larger cities. I don't think we've had to experience it, but it's not anything new, we're not reinventing the wheel. But that coordination between the contractor, us, and the downtown director with those businesses is gonna be really where, where the effort comes, comes to success. And I think, um.
And they've had the initial meetings with our downtown director, so there's been dialogue going on.
To update everybody, and again, each time we hit a snag, we, we kinda get past it and then communicate it back. And, and, um, this last snag was when the, when the, uh, Union County showed that they wanted to replace the water main right in the same project area. And so we stopped everything, got them as a part of the contract. And so that delayed us a little bit more at this, at this twelfth hour. But, um, that's all taken care of and it will be completed as a part of this work and, and really we'll have a better project for it.
That's excellent. Think, it, it is an exciting project. Any other thoughts, comments around? We're looking forward to moving this one around. Looking for a motion then.
Motion to approve resolution of intent, resolution two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-two and execute the letter of intent to award bid to Nissari Development contingent on NCDOT's concurrence of the project.
Very good, motion is up on this motion. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, good, all the way around, thank you, unanimous. Thanks, Matt, good work, we're gonna, I think we're gonna let you cut the ribbon, so.
If I make it that far, if I'm not buried in concrete.
Alright, next up, consider the approval of proclamation in support of Year of the Trail. Ms. Dina is back up to us, Dina, floor is yours again.
Hello again. So this is a real exciting, um, come about for, as a state law. And we're gonna move into, in twenty-one, um, the House and the Senate actually voted together to make, uh, the year twenty-three, the North Carolina Year of the Trail. This is awesome. And they worked together and to bring forth, um, this awesome way of, um, celebrating our trails, also doing collective, um, uh, ways to encourage more trails, then getting all. then getting all counties and municipalities to kind of work together to bring forth more trails, and then, um, give us a way to look for grant funding as well for future trails. So, again, an awesome initiative, and working together is totally cool. Uh, but we are bringing tonight, um, to kind of give you an update of what we're doing in Waxahaw. So, on this side is the North Carolina poster, and they had their own, um, comms, uh, marketing about the Year of the Trail, and we use their marketing to per- um, make our flyer for Waxahaw. And this is in our program guide, and will be up on the website, and gives you where our current trails are at, um, especially our east-west corridor, uh, that has the Carolina Thread Trail that we're partners with. And, uh, we're gonna be highlighting trail initiatives this coming up year, and we are, you know, going for future grants as well. Um, but we wanted to give you this heads up, but this is happening this year. And also, um, for tonight, for our, to do the proclamation, um, from y'all, um, for the Year of the Trail. Any questions?
Everybody understand that one? Year of the Trails, I like it, just keep building on it. Alright, no other questions on that, we don't see anybody's hand up on this one, so, I'm looking for a motion again.
Motion to approve proclamation two-zero-two-three-zero-zero-one, designating twenty-twenty-three the North Carolina Year of the Trail.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
All the way around, unanimous, thank you, thank you, Dina.
Thank you.
Hard work, thank you very much. Nothing on, uh, closed session, fortunately, tonight, that's a good thing, so, town leadership reports, I'm gonna flip over to town manager Jeffrey Wells, Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, number one, the town campus project is moving along, which we're all very excited about that, the progress, uh, just a few, a few things of note. But we are in the finalization of the easement documents for our sewer connection, that'll go through the, um, the school property there, over to the manhole adjacent to Nesbit Park, that should be recorded in the next week or two, so we should be in good shape there. We've taken some, uh, great care and extra erosion control measures along the creek, by doubling up the silk fencing along there with all the rain that we've had, and drainage installation has begun, and that's, uh, what you see in those big junction boxes and things like that that are going into the ground out there now. Uh, and all of the long lead time items have been ordered, such as HVAC units, electrical panels, lights, structural steel, all that, uh, is in process, so happy to see that moving along. Um, and just like any construction site, there's always little minor issues that pop up, and we've dealt with a couple of those, but very minor, and so, uh, we're in good shape there. And the most important thing, though, that I wanted to make you aware of, is that we will be getting eight electric car chargers for the site. So, uh, we are kind of deciding how they'll be arranged on the, uh, site now, and then the, uh, cooler thing is is that there will be the, uh, the fifty amp chargers, which are the fast chargers, so we're excited about that. So somebody will be able to, uh, uh, for instance, if they wanna, uh, or have a need to conduct a town business, and plug in there, and most likely by the time they're done with their town business, they'll have a good charge to get on and where they need to go, so.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Is, is that, that's Duke or Union?
Uh, it's gonna be Union Power.
Union.
Will provide the, uh, the power there.
Okay, great, that's good to see, the site looks really good, it's really coming out, it's cleaned up pretty well initially, so.
Can really visualize what it will look like.
Really can.
Yeah, we're real, we're real excited about it, and, uh, uh, next is, uh, the retreat will be in a little over, uh, two weeks, and so you have a, uh, draft agenda, and probably by the end of this week, we will make that the, uh, final agenda, so we'll send out that out to you, uh, in case there's any last-minute tweaks, but I don't foresee that to, uh, be the case, uh, and all the materials, uh, for, for it will probably follow at some point, uh, mid to late, late next week, so we have a, a good guest list, as we usually do, and then, of course, all the department heads and other staff members will be there in support, and we're looking forward to getting, uh, guidance from the board on twenty-twenty-three and our upcoming, uh, budget, and everything that we have in front of us, so looking forward to that very much. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate that, we're all excited to take another step in now year four, at least, uh, this side of the, uh, elected officials, you guys have, uh, sat through it a little bit longer, so, appreciate that, but we've, uh, we've been moving along pretty good and fast, and financially effectively, so, that's a great thing. Alright, thanks Jeff, uh, downtown director, Ashley Noel, thank you, coming up, floor is yours.
Thank you, so, first I want to thank you guys for your support last month on the Downtown Waxahaw Association. And so we did submit and receive our approval for our articles of incorporation, uh, back in mid-December, and then we're currently accepting board applications for that nonprofit, so, those are available on our website, so if you go to waxaw.com/downtown, and those applications are available for anyone that's interested in being on that board. And we have gotten seven so far, and we've gotten a lot of other people that are excited and are working on their applications now too. And, last week I committed, or I completed our, uh, yearly Main Street assessment, so this is something that we have to complete each year with the North Carolina Main Street Group, and this determines our accreditation with National Main Street. Um, so we are measured by six standards, our Main Street program is. Um, so we have to have broad-based community commitment to revitalization, so showing that we have the public and private sector involved, um, inclusive leadership and organizational capacity, um, diversi- diversity and funding and operating a sustainable organization, uh, planning programming that's driven by our economic development strategies, focusing on historic preservation to lead that economic development, and then demonstrating our impact and results. So, um, there, it was, I think, about a forty-page document that we completed and submitted. Um, last year when we did our assessment, the feedback we got, um, was that we really needed to engage the community more in our, um, in our committees as well as our funding, so, uh, we started our Main Street committees last April, and then we're working on our quasi-program, so I am optimistic that we will be accredited this year. Um, we should find out, uh, late February, um, and then if we are accredited, we'll be recognized, um, at the national conference in Boston in March. Um, speaking of conference, our North Carolina State Conference is coming up in March as well, so that's March fourteenth through sixteenth in Statesville. Um, it gathers communities from all over the state, from what I've been told, it's the largest conference, um, largest state conference in the country. Um, brings together not just, um, downtown groups, but experts in planning, economic development, placemaking, parks and rec. Um, it's really a great combination of people that comes, that come to this. Um, one of the great things at this conference this year, they will also rec- recognize award winners. Um, so on Wednesday, March fifteenth, they'll recognize winners from all over the state in several categories, and we will be winning an award. So if anyone would like to come join us, um, just to recognize that award winner. And then, on Thursday, they'll recognize downtown champions from all over the state too, so we will also have a, a downtown champion recognized that day as well, so.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, it, it'll definitely be a good week.
That's good, is it, it's not known yet, those, um, winners, they haven't announced?
Yeah, so, uh, the Mule Barn is winning an award for best historic re- uh, reuse, um, so I, I can announce that one, but I can't announce the other.
Alright, very good, fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough, any thoughts, comments to our presenter on this? Ashley, you've done a great job catching up to us, pacing us, and outpacing us, so, I appreciate that, uh, it's come a long ways, and I do get a lot of great comments about your efforts in the downtown from the downtown merchants, so, appreciate-
They're a great group to work with.
They are, they're a good group, we have a good, uh, good group of business people down there. Alright, any other comments, we'll let you off the hook, easy, thank you very much. Alright, next up, back to Matt Hubert, Matt, welcome back.
So, um, just an update, uh, you know, we were, where we submitted for project funding from, uh, Charlotte Regional Transportation Organization for a, uh, center turn lane on Broom Street, as well as a eastbound left turn lane on, on South Main Street. And, uh, I get to have a little fun with acronyms here, and the riddle is that the CRTPO POC approved the DA to TCC.
Welcome to my world.
Right, right. Right, do, well, maybe we'll, we'll come back with that one, but basically what it means is, uh, that project was approved by the, uh, the project oversight committee, and basically they've recommended to the technical coordinating committee that it be approved, and, and typically that's a, uh, a done deal, it very rarely does CCC not approve, uh, a project, because it's already shown to meet the funding that they have, and, and prioritized, uh, against all the other projects, so, that's good news, it will be another years before that's in place, but another, another win to, uh, to save money and improve conditions for, for our town, and specifically in an area of, of, of really bad congestion.
Absolutely, what a great effort, what a great effort, combined I might add, but, great effort.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate that, any comments, thoughts for Matt? Appreciate that. Alright, Parks and Rec up again, Ms. Dina, you can work your way around the table, hurry, hurry.
I'm here to give you an update about our new program guide, and all the wonderful things in it. So, youth ballet's starting back, creative clay with Ms. Kristen at the art, um, boxes started back, psiology, charcuterie, walking group, fitness, senior bingo is big.
Oh my.
And then, movie night will start in March, so that's the start of our, um, event season starts in March. But this is where you find all your wonderful programming, and so please check it out, it's on the website, and we also have copies at our office, and we can email it to you as well, this is your great way, and to find everything on rec desk as well. Um, so please come and join us for upcoming programs. Any questions?
Oh, look at that, good one, any thoughts, questions around it? Thank you very much, appreciate that. Commissioners, any general comments across the board? Before we all want to go home tonight? Alright, so nothing on there, I want to thank all you guys again for being prepared, doing the work that you have done on all the stuff that comes before us all the time, all the input from all the citizens, I know we can't always cover all the bases, but some of us reach out and cover for each other, so, I do appreciate that, that's, uh, that's a nice thing to have. We have a great board, we've got good opportunity, we've got a good team going on here, and so I just want to share my thanks with all of you guys to say thank you again. Happy New Year, once again, Charlie, any thoughts, comments on your side tonight?
I was just gonna say Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, well, that's a good addition, we like it, it's nice to be able to say that. Alright, on this, I'm gonna then gonna look for a motion to adjourn, who's up?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
It does.